Open Public Meetings Act will provide on the summer of the sixth twenty twenty-three. By posting the notice for the respective bill for the city of Lambeau. Borough of Stockton and township of West Danwell. And advertise in the Hunter County Democrat and the Trenton Times newspaper. Please stand for the flag.
Jennifer Bacher.
Here.
Martha Dennis. Martha.
She looks muted.
Gina Faschetti.
Present.
Brian Kies, here. Kevin Kobaleski, here. Aaron O'Leary.
Here.
Michael Strauss.
Here.
Ronnie Todd Marino.
Here.
Jim Gallagher.
There.
Let's uh we'll begin with the report of our two representatives of the board, fresh off bowling lines.
Hello, um so the time between this board meeting and last board meeting, it wasn't a full month, so it's my report's gonna be quite shorter, but still detailed. So for our sports, um we've officially started most of our winter sports um this year. Our South Hundred and Wrestling Team will be operating as a varsity team for the first time. Which I think is pretty cool. Um this is our first year in a while for our winner track to be back. Um and will also be a varsity team. Um our girls bowling team uh the other week won against one of the first match of the season against College Achieve Central Charter. And our middle school boys and girls basketball is underway. With the high school starting their games this week and middle school started last. Um for our clubs today, our peer leaders help seat and serve um many of our local senior citizens at their luncheon today. During the school. Our middle school and high school concerts, um last week, our middle school had their concert, our middle school on location and our seven and eight graders. Both joined in uh their band choir concerts. And this week Wednesday, December eighteenth at seven P M, our high school choir will be performing in the auditorium. Uh for our college trips, um our high school will be hosting college trip to Maravian in January. This trip is open to juniors and seniors. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. The board have any questions? Were you uh?
Actually apologies, I am here, uh small technical difficulties, but I am here.
Okay.
I understand that there was uh performance of the play. I know you're involved in play.
I'm not a um I'm not involved in that this year unfortunately.
Okay.
But yeah, uh they did have a performance in uh high school, middle school drama both performed for those seniors.
I understand turnout was really good. There was like fifty some people there.
There were there were quite a few. It was very.
Yes, there's both of my parents.
Oh, really?
My father reconnected with a neighbor that he hadn't seen from his from his childhood.
Well, that's really a cool thing. Oh, there were there were so many people. They're so nice.
Very good. Okay. Um P T O, uh we'll start with the L A F. We have an L A F update.
Hey, guys, um so we've been busy and this week is just really piled it on, but um. Our kids made out December um was was a hit as usual. We brought in around seven hundred and eighty dollars after expenses. Um the kids had their favorite dinner for dinner. Um they had cereal for dinner. They did crafts and then they played um a life-sized game of Hungry Hungry Hippo, which was really fun. Thank God for Miss Ryan, because she's amazing with them. Um our pre-K events committee is hosting a gingerbread house making um. Event and a story hour tomorrow night at the elementary school in the multipurpose room. Um this event is free for all pre-K families. Um we strongly suggest that um families pre-register with the form that went out. It went out on a Q R code on the flyer and it went out with a link in Parent Square. Um we will certainly take people out the door, but it just helps keep track of supplies. Um our luminary sale um has been extended to the eighteenth. Luminary kits can be purchased on membership toolkit. And they will be delivered to families um on December twenty-first and twenty-second. The kits are ten dollars for ten luminaries and um for those of you who aren't familiar, they can be displayed at your curb or on your sidewalk, and it's just a fun tradition that. We started as a sixth grade fundraiser and we do it in our development, but it would be nice to extend it down to Lambertville and in other developments as well. Um last week, we had our holiday shop at the elementary school. Um it gave the pre-K through fourth kit the opportunity to shop for holiday gifts for their loved ones. Um and the P T O ended up sponsoring about thirty kids and they had a ten-dollar budget, so that's really nice. Um on Thursday between eight and nine. The P T O will be handing out cookies and juice to grades seven through twelve, and then. We will also be doing donuts, pastries, and other refreshments for staff members at South too. So, oh, and then in addition to that. Um later this week at the middle school on location and the elementary school, the P T O will be doing refreshments and coffee bar. And then today we just did this again, but this year the P T O started a concession uh concession stand um for middle school girls. And boys basketball and wrestling matches, so it. It's a little slow to start, but now that the kids know that it's there, it's becoming more and more popular and it's fun to see them and all that. Then the pre-K committee will be organizing crafts for the pre-K classes um at the middle school on location because they didn't get to do the holiday shop, so we bought them frames, so they'll do the craft and then we'll send it home as a gift for their. For their families. Um our after-school enrichment program committee um has been hard at work. Planning for our programs that will start in March. Um we had a lot of good responses for our class recruitment. We have about nine staff members and two students. One of them. Is here and the other one is McKenna Healy, so it's really nice that we extended that to seniors and and juniors who can. Come and share their wisdom with the kids. The kids really like it too. Um you guys are much cooler than we are, so. Um and then if any other staff members are interested in teaching classes, um there's plenty of availability. We hope to make it as big and grow it as big as we possibly can. And then I've been working with Miss Ryan um and Jen Bergenfeld to get the after-school enrichment program off the ground at the middle school on location. So far, we have four class offerings that will open up um between January and March. Um and more information on that will go out probably tomorrow or Wednesday. Um registration will be on membership toolkit, but there will also be a flyer that's going home. What else? Um and also for all after-school enrichment program, there's scholarships available and. The programming is designed to be accessible to all students in the district. And then please be on the lookout for the Shake Shack dine and donate event in January. Penny Wars, which will be going out district-wide also in January. And our Christmas tree fundraiser. So if anyone has a truck. And like three spare hours, we really need people to help us. This is a pretty lucrative fundraiser. Um donations. Are suggested at twenty-five dollars, but we can. Pull in quite a bit for very little overhead, so if anyone can help us out. Um all of the dates are they've gone out on Parent Square and via membership toolkit and they're posted on Facebook, so. Um I think that's it. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Very, um for our next round of correspondence, we do have several letters that came in from the family. And those are available on our website for the agenda for the public to uh review. And so the we need a resolution to approve the minutes from the November twenty-fifth. Board meeting and I have a motion. Second, second by Brian. Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? Approving minutes of the executive session. Minutes will be approved in January, yes. Any other discussion on minutes? Okay, roll call group or not a roll call, but Brian said all in favor.
Hi.
Let him stay. Okay. Um now we have a report on our accelerate block of Mrs. Len, who's our director of the regular.
Yeah.
So this I'll say it real quick. So if you recall, we implemented new schedules. At our elementary school and then also uh at the five-six level. Full schedules included in accelerate block, so Jane Allen tonight is gonna give an update. Based on where we are with the accelerate block and and how we're using.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. Uh so as Tony said, tonight's focus on my overview of accelerate is really just to inform the public and the board of education. On one of the primary interventions um that we have put into place to address some of the unfinished learning. The um lack or missing prerequisite skills and the student achievement scores of our current students. So I know we've heard a lot about what we're doing and um when I presented the achievement report, we talked about what those interventions are. We also talked about um last month when we presented the district improvement plan and what the interventions are. And what are some of the things we're putting into place? And just so I can update the board and the community on the things that we are doing. To address the achievement scores and to make our district more competitive above the state standard averages. So accelerate is something that, as Tony said, we built into the schedule. So this was a systemic change. So we created a schedule in both the K four building as well as the five-six building where there is a period. Um where students receive all different types of services, so they're not pulled out of the classroom. Um with this schedule change and implementation of our standards and you've heard all about the curriculum and the initiatives we've done. These are the things we're doing every single day to address what it is we need to do here to move South Hundred and just school. Excuse me, students. Um so I'll focus on tonight mainly just the K four accelerate and the five-six accelerate. You know that flex has been in place at the middle and high school for about, this is its second year. So tonight's overview was really just to focus on those buildings. Just so you have a little bit of perspective, um back in April, we um presented about the new schedules for both of those two buildings. And so the accelerate block happens for thirty minutes every day, K four. And for sixty minutes every day in five-six. So just kind of keep those timeframes in mind as I go over the different um aspects of what we're doing. So accelerate, what does it look like? So this is a pretty good graphic representation about what could go on during the accelerate block. You know that we've been focusing a lot on small group instruction. We talked about that. Before I even got here with blended learning and how we were gonna meet the needs of students with all different varieties of learning styles. So in a sample time in a thirty-minute accelerate block in um the K four building. Teacher may be working with a small group of students. You can see those three at a table and they may be reviewing a skill. They may be also enriching or in extending a skill. And then students may be working independently on devices. It could also be additional practice or enrichment and the color coding, if you look over at the key. You can see what those codes represent. So anything with a green chicklet um represents a rich and rigorous grade level content, so. Students may be practicing math problems that they just learned, or they may be rereading a text. Um the blue are things that we do to scaffold and help support students. And then additional support, as we know from our data, where students may need some additional support on some foundational skills. So that may be knowing some practice on addition and subtraction skills in addition, so that they can do double-digit multiplication or that kind of thing. So I just wanted to go ahead and show you the targeted differentiated instruction on the forty-five minutes just shows how students could rotate. And everybody can be doing something different. So we talk a lot about M T S S and I just wanted to draw your attention. This is a New Jersey initiative, so if you are interested. You can Google New Jersey tiered system of support and write on the D O E website, there's a graphic. Um and there's a guidebook and I, you know, there are paper copies um as well as information, so. Just so the community and the board knows, this isn't something that we created. This is something that the the state has said. This is things that you need to do and put into place. So M T S S, as you've heard us talk a lot about, is the multi-tiered system of support. I'm not gonna read each one of those blocks because I think it would um go on and on, but I do wanna draw your attention to the graphic on the right. And so you'll notice that tier one is the bottom and I'm gonna define a little bit about those tiers. Tier two is what we call targeted instruction and then tier three is intensive instruction. So as we're thinking about what it means to intervene. Or do things before we need to remediate, that's where a lot of the tier one comes in. I also wanna preface this by anything that I share tonight, please feel free to email me or give me a call and I can uh meet with you. Or we can set up a Zoom call and I can explain anything a little bit more clearly. Um because this is a lot of education, a lot of language that you may not have heard before. So this is our process overview. Um when I shared these slides or uh similar slides with the District Parent Council on last week. They wanted to really know how we're using the data, so we talk a lot about the data and assessments and the benchmarks. And when I came to South Hundred and I was quite impressed about all the data we had. We just didn't have a very good way to put it all together and have it easily accessible for the teachers to use or to turn around. And so as we've been looking at narrowing different types of benchmarks and assessments. And we're looking at ways that we can actually hone in on what students need to learn. So this is the process overview. So you know that coming up in January, as you all see with our assessment calendar that's posted online. We give the fall, we give the winter benchmarks. After that, I'll be back next month and I'll share a little bit about how we use that data. And that starts with a data team meeting. So these again are all suggestions and. Strategies that the state has said work really well. Well, we've also put them into place and they have been working. So far, awesome. We're getting kids the things that they need. So after we all come together with the stakeholders, so on that data team, it'll be would be the principal. The counselor might be there. We um what we call the standards with support teachers and those are the people that specifically provide the interventions. There's classroom teachers, the counselor could be on there, the nurse could be on there. It's a fluid committee depending on what the needs of the students are. But the core of the team that's making the decisions about the data is typically the principal, the standards with support teachers, the classroom teachers. Me and then Dr. Luchko, who plays a part in our data integration. So as you can see through the overview of the different process, we identify, we develop a plan, we look at the targeted two for small group. We identify the students, we create the plan, we progress monitor, and then we continue again. It's a cyclical process. It's very fluid. The point is that we're targeting these interventions so that we can sort plug a gap and then get the student right back to where they need to be. So let's talk a little bit about the overview of the tiers. So if you hear tier one instruction, I'm talking about what is taught in all of the classrooms. We talked a little bit last year when I was um giving you information about wit and wisdom or foundations. And I talked about how that was a tier one program. That just means core instruction. Um I use the term core plus more because that is the instruction that all students get. And so when we developed the accelerate block, we knew that the students, if they needed something beyond. What was delivered that day or that week or that month, then they could get that intervention or extension during accelerate. So tier one is for all students. We focus again on small group instruction. Elementary teachers have been doing this for years and years and years and years, and it oftentimes even. When I was in kindergarten, we had centers or center work. It's the same type of thing. Students, if you've got a class of fifteen. Or nineteen kindergartners, you work in small groups because that way everyone can do something different and it's a great way to manage class. But also to meet the needs of the students in the classroom. Um tier two is for the next fifteen percent of our students in need of support. So when we're looking at class sizes of fifteen, you can do fifteen percent, so that's a very small group. What we've learned from our assessments when we first gave them, they were all baseline, right? So when we gave eye-ready diagnostic. When we gave math, when we gave science, when we gave some of the dibbles. So we had a lot of students that were like, wait, we've got some gaps here. We've got some unfinished learning. And that is completely acceptable because we needed to have a place to start. We couldn't start where we were. We couldn't start next month. We couldn't start where we thought third graders or kindergartners should be. We have to start where we are. And that's great because you at once you identify what kids know, then you start to develop what they need to learn new things. And then tier three, again, we're looking at five percent. So again, if we have fifteen students in a class or forty-seven students in a grade. Five percent is the number of students that we should be giving the additional support to for tier three. So tier one, we look as a prevention. We learned and we talk a lot about prevention, just like we um we exercise, we drink water, we do all those things to prevent. Um a health crisis or an ailment or whatever is we may do. So we're constantly looking at preventing. Any type of um gap or deficit. So how do we do that? We do that with core content in the classroom period. And with identified students. Um it's focused on a skill or strategy. Uh you'll see some pictures at the uh the end of the slides where teachers are working with small groups and then students are working independently. On technology, reading a book, working with a partner. That is what the small group instruction looks like. And it's all driven by the data. What did it look like on the foundations assessment? How did they do on an exit ticket? Uh most of our math classes K eight end with an exit ticket or some type of assessment to say, did they students get this or did they not? Um could be two or three questions and then that helps the teacher say, okay, tomorrow I need to pull these three students. Because they didn't understand that you can only multiply like unlike denominators, whatever the the example may be. We look at tier two is the intervention. This is where we want to do the, we wanna really move the mountains. We wanna get the most number of students. With any type of specific skill. So again, this happens in the classroom. This is where the interventionist, the standards with support teacher might come in and work with a small group to say, all right, we're gonna reread this passage. Or we're gonna practice this math fact. That's not to say that the classroom teacher might not also do that. But it's just a second person in the room who's been trained with intervention strategies and is familiar and comfortable with the data. The suggestion is twice a week for approximately thirty minutes. Again, we're a small district. We've got all kinds of different things that make us South Hundredan, so these suggestions could be for anyone or any district. So we do the best we can with what we have available to us. And then there's tier three for remediation. As teachers, we know that when we teach a lesson, eighty percent of the kids are gonna get it the first time around, no doubt about it. We also know that twenty percent are not gonna get it. When they say they're not gonna get it, that may mean they might need the directions read to them again. That may mean they're gonna try it with blocks that time, or they're gonna use base tens or the cubes. Or they may need a highlighter. So I'm not saying that the remediation or the twenty percent is they didn't understand it at all. Or we need, we have a crisis on hand. That just means they didn't get the first time. So we know that when we teach a lesson, we have to have those things in the back of our head. It's very different than delivering a math lesson on. You know, like denominators and everybody just being taught the same thing and then go practice your, you know, your one to twenty odds. Or then the next day do your evens, right? It's a very different way that we're teaching because that doesn't meet the needs of all of our kids. So tier three is where we're really doing the most intense support and these are on specific skills that may be from a previous grade level. They could be prior skills that they didn't know or that for some reason the student um didn't. Have competent mastering. It's always data-driven and we have progress monitoring, which makes we means we take short. Temperature checks and that could be after a week, could be after two weeks, it could be after six weeks, but we're always monitoring the progress. So it doesn't go too far one way or too far another way. We always have our finger on the pulse. And then it's systematic. So just to give you a little bit of where we are now in mid-December, we have a lot to celebrate. There's been a lot of new initiatives. Um I have to just shout out to all of the teachers who have taken on all of the new initiatives. Moved into new buildings, have gone through training and there is very little that looks the same as it may have three or four years ago. And so they've really, we've all embraced this change because we know we need to make some changes to get our students where they are um to meet the New Jersey state standards. So our students have taken the eye-ready diagnostic assessment in the fall. We're looking forward to doing that again in the winter. They've been placed in differentiated groups for standards with support in tiers um two and three. And in flex, they're grouped according to needs and we've done some changes with the flex schedule to be able to meet those needs. And then the teachers are using the accelerate to provide the tiered interventions with toolkit and my path, and those are the eye-ready lessons. We're also using foundations. We're also using um interventions with our reveal program. There's lots of different um resources that we're using. That are all standards-based and aligned to the assessments and instruction. So how do we keep the students on the computer and engaged? And how are we gonna get them excited for the diagnostic in January? Because when we gave it in September. We really weren't a hundred percent sure what we were going to get. Teachers were new, students were new, they hadn't taken a test online other than the N J S L A, which is. Extremely rigorous. Um and so we want to be able to be transparent and have those conversations with our students. There's no more guess my thinking as a teacher. Let me, let me, let me, you raise your hand and guess what the answer is. No, we're gonna have clear conversations. Hey. I see you've done really well with these lessons. Let's celebrate the fact that you did four lessons this week or conversely. Wait a minute, I see you're doing lessons, but you're not making, you're not making your progress or you're not mastering the content. Oh, well, I didn't realize that we were gonna have a conversation about it, or I didn't realize I was gonna be held at Carnival. So we have these conversations as I I meet with teachers all the time to just say, why don't you ask them what's wrong? Or why don't you ask them what it is? So these are ways that we can celebrate and engage young students and then also with our older students. Um we've heard a couple um some feedback from students. Well, why am I doing third grade material when I'm a fifth grader? Well, did you click through? We got that red flag that said you rushed. Oh, well, I didn't know it counted. Well, it does count, just like the N J S L A, everything counts. So having those positive conversations, celebrating those successes, and you'll see a little bit about the next couple of slides, what it is we're doing. To um to celebrate and get kids excited. So this is what our goal is right now and what we're doing, and this is where we pretty much are now that it is Jan, December sixteenth. And um this is the thing. So we do spend, I just also wanna shout out to the teachers to say um thank thank them for the professionalism and their dedication to looking at data. Twice a month, we have after-school meetings and those are data-driven discussions. We may be looking globally or at a high level of N J S L A and looking and saying, oh, well, why did the E L A students in sixth grade not? Get this standard or what do we need to do in math to increase the modeling? Um practice that not very many students do. So we do that high-level data. Then we also look at the eye-ready. Where are the graphs? What are students doing? What are they not doing? And then we also drill down even further and say, what can I do in my classroom to make sure that. They understand this mode of writing or what a Socratic seminar is or what we need to do to. Learn the vocabulary for the wit and wisdom lesson or how they're gonna do the blends for the foundations. So all of those different things, we provide them and those are. Very data-driven and it also gives them the opportunity to talk a little bit more about the whole child. Because we know as much as I'm talking about the numbers and as much as I'm talking about, you know, moving reds, greens, yellows, blues, state standards and not. We have to know what who the student is as a four-year-old, an eight-year-old. Or a fifteen-year-old. What are they bringing in their portfolio that may affect whatever it may be with their academic achievement? So that only comes from the teachers and the feedback they give us around the table or the feedback they share with each other. And so those are things. That is the qualitative data that we don't necessarily put a number on, but it has to be incorporated into the quantitative data that we're using to make these decisions. And so I just wanted to share some of the things that are being done. And so I just wanted to share some of the things that are being done and at the middle school on location, they're calling it hype week. So after return from winter break, there will be two days of the hype days. And so just like we did, or very similar to what we did with the NJSLA last year, where we had a pep rally and the staff wore shirts on Wednesdays and we celebrated successes. These are some things that we're doing to bring attention to the benchmarks and what we need to do to be ready. This is that opportunity for kids to show us that they can shine and that we know that in them and that they are much more than a number. But they're also really out there to make us proud and make us proud of them. So there are certificates that can be sent home. You may see these coming home. There also, this, this next picture is a iReady Goal-getters bulletin board at the middle school on location. And there are some students who have received some different certificates. The different colored circles are 20 lessons passed, 40 lessons passed, 80 lessons passed. And so the students have all different certificates based on the goals that they met and that they set for themselves, as well as the what iReady suggests. And that is 30 to 40 minutes per week on iReady practicing skills that we know the students need some extra, they have some unfinished learning or some prerequisite gaps. So I just wanted to share with you some pictures because it's easier to see what it looks like. So in a kindergarten class, you can see that some of the students are on their iPad, some are having snack. Some may be working on practicing their letters. The idea is, and it can be very hard for people who are not teachers to understand, well, what does it look like if everybody's doing something different? Well, students are grouped in that we look at trends or groups. So there's not 19 different things going on. There's probably three to four different things going on because students fit in certain buckets and have certain characteristics that can help them. First grade accelerate, and this is what I was talking about earlier, where a teacher is working with a group of students at the table. Students are working independently. One student is on technology. One student is practicing her high-frequency words. So it can, it can look very different in each classroom. Second grade was on a field trip the day that I took these pictures. That's why they're not there. This is a third grade accelerate. And what I wanted to point out to you here is the picture on the left is an ESL student, a teacher. That teacher is pushing in during accelerate, so those students don't need to leave the classroom. She's working specifically with those two ESL students. Students are working independently in the background of the second picture. And then there's a teacher working one-on-one with a student who needs some extra support for math facts. Those are beautiful tables and I just have to shout out that they're awesome for kids to write right on there with the teacher. So again, you're getting the idea that everything is different in every room, but the students' needs are getting met. In fourth grade, this is all in one classroom. So the teacher's on the floor working with a small group. There are two children working independently. The small picture up on the right is a special ed teacher who is part of the class, is part of an in-class resource, and she's working with students based on their IEP goals. And then that is another special education teacher who's coming and supporting students within the classroom. So as you can see, it's a busy place because everyone is doing something different. But everyone is very focused and everything is very targeted. And that is what we, that is our goal and that is what we are getting to feel much more comfortable with as the months go on. This, we also built in some of our specials. So music happens in accelerate for these students. So again, they're not missing math or they're not missing language arts. They're going during accelerate for one period and I think it's once every three weeks. But the point is they're going during a time where their needs are getting met for them because they chose to play an instrument. And then lastly, this just gives you a little bit of an understanding. This is typically what's posted on a teacher's whiteboard during accelerate. And so you can see the center time, what the students may be doing. And so as you saw, the teachers and the groups, that is not for the full 30 minutes. That might be for 10 minutes and then the group rotates. It could be for 15 minutes and the group rotates. So I thought these visuals really helped you gain an understanding of what it looks like from the view of being in the classroom.
I want to ask a question from the board for this one. I got the accelerate program.
For the the 5%, 15%, are those like just how it kind of shakes out or are those numbers we have to stick to?
No, no, it's research-based. So that's typically what, if you look at most MTSS research information over the years. MTSS took over from for RTI, which is response intervention, which goes back several years from all different types of federal programming. 15% is typically what is the the suggested goal of where we are. Sometimes we're over, obviously, because we just started, but that's typically what we want to look for.
And the the data team review, do you share any like output from that meeting with parents? Like, do they know who met, what was discussed and the outcome from that, you know, for a student?
Absolutely. Yep. Actually, everybody, we meet, we have a whole school data meeting. So we spend the day and the the data, the core data team stays, you know, pretty much is in the conference room and the teachers cycle in for 30 to 40 minutes. So we look at each classroom or each grade and the data. And we look at the whole composite of the class and say, are, where are our students? Did we see growth? Did we see progress? Are there students that were, that were ready to transition back to the classroom? Yes. If there are students that we're going to now pick up, then we send home letters and those come from the interventionist and the principal. And that just says your child's going to receive tier-two services in the classroom. And we just let you know, of course, any type of changing in any type of program or meeting with another teacher, we certainly communicate with families.
And my last question is, how do we, or has it not come up, or I don't know, but how do we handle if there are students who are just like, I cannot sit in front of this iReady, I can't, I'm not going to do it? Like, are there alternatives?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes. I mean, not everything is for everybody. So actually, the lessons that the teachers pull from iReady are not on the computer. So iReady says, based on this diagnostic, based on these scores, you hear are lessons that specifically target that skill and it is a lesson plan. So it may be looking at passages from a text. It is not online when they're with the teacher. And typi- when they're with the teacher, I would say 90% of the time, they're not online. The teacher may be monitoring what they're doing, but that's the point of the face-to-face.
So I appreciate you walking through it and walking through it slowly. I think it's, you know, we've talked a lot over the past few years about the need to change practice. We can continue the same thing over and over and expect different, different results. And so this is a very clear depiction of how you not only, we're not only using the data differently, but how we're making space in the child's schedule doesn't pull kids out. It's every single day. And so even though you're talking about like tier three, tier two, one, that the, that that intervention can happen on the fly for these kids using the different tools that we've, we've implemented. It's really, it's really exciting and impressive. And I know that it represents so much work on the part of the teachers, understanding how to do it. The buy-in, it's not easy and it's also a ton of work that the kids are doing. So I, I always liked having it like walked through and I think that the visuals were very helpful. I'm also very grateful that now we're going to be getting regular reports on the benchmarks because we have them before, but mostly we would focus on just the NJSLA. And, you know, we'd be looking at, in September, we'd be looking at last spring, and it was less useful. The benchmarks, looking at it regularly allows not only us to keep track of it, teachers to keep track of it, but also I think families in the community, because we need to know what's happening that's different.
Absolutely. At any time, a family member or has questions about their child's data or how they're doing, you know, certainly reach out to the teacher. You know, just like at parent-teacher conferences, there's information shared. That, that happens in early November. But if you have questions about anything, you know, that the teacher is right there. And as I said before, they're the experts on those children in their class. So they can certainly speak to how their student's doing. We, you know, believe very closely in transparency, right? We're not high, you know, this is, we want to know, we want you to, we want to help if you can help. We understand that, you know, you might not be able to, but, you know, three minutes in a car ride going over math facts can do great things, right? Or whether you've got the foundations rings or whatever it may be, or tell me about what you're reading or, you know. So I understand, you know, everybody's family dynamics and your schedules outside of the school hours are very demanding. But if you, if there are things that you're interested in helping, please reach out to the teachers because there's, we can always use one more support.
We're, we're going to put more of those reports in on course at some point, too, right?
Any other questions?
Could you talk a little bit about the relationship between the MyPath curriculum and the curriculum that students are getting in math class?
Absolutely.
For example, or I'd like to read your math, but I mean, I guess also, you know.
Absolutely, absolutely. So the point of the ma- the MyPath and really why we went to iReady was because with the NJSLA scores, we realized that there are certainly gaps in what we're teaching and what the state is assessing. So please know that the New Jersey Student Learning Standards have now been updated in for 2023. So we have new ELA standards and we have new math standards. So the ELA standards, the new standards will be assessed this spring, the math they gave us another year, so 2026. So the state is shifting what the expectations are for students and what they need to know and be able to do. So the Common Core State Standard, CCSS, you may have remembered, they came out and everybody got really upset because kindergartners are now being asked to do what first graders were doing. Fourth graders are now being asked to do what fifth graders are doing. I've talked a lot about the three-dimensional science assessments. That's very different than labeling the parts of the flower, right? They're given a task and they have to extrapolate different information from a graph, from a passage, from a map. So as we, as the state has changed the standards, we've had to change. But you, that we can't, and many, many, many students in many school districts across the country can't keep up with all the changes, right? There is a crosswalk. So we could say they had to do this, but now they do this. So we realized that there's some unfinished learning, whether it was, maybe we didn't have a solid standards-based ELA program, which we didn't before wit and wisdom. We had great things that were in place, but it was, it wasn't quite as consistent across the board. Reveal, this is our third year with Reveal, but the program before Reveal and Visions might not have been aligned to the standards. And so when the students were tested, they, it was like this, we didn't meet, we didn't hit the target because what the state is asking and what this we're learning for Envision didn't necessarily match up. So MyPath gives them a diagnostic assessment. You go on and you take a test of all different things for ELA and for math. And then it says, these are skills that should have been secure in second grade. But you're a third grader now. You don't, there's a little bit of gap or unfinished learning or prerequisite skills. So you're going to practice those skills and then you're going to meet, you're going to get proficient. So that's that, that's where it becomes the personalized learning. So every student that gets on MyPath has different problems than the person sitting next to them, based on where they are. What is taught in the core instruction or in tier one is the reveal math and those are the New Jersey State Learning Standards for math. Those are the New Jersey State Learning Standards for ELA that wit and wisdom and foundations address. So they're learning what third graders are learning at that point in time. Whereas MyPath may be addressing what they did not completely master in second grade. Regrouping, area, time, money, things that are always challenging for kids to learn. So more practice on time and money may be what's in a first-grade profile for MyPath.
So if you can, the, the excel, is the accelerate period when we're talking about math primarily or exclusively for MyPath and MyPath-related lessons? Or is there also core curriculum instruction going on during?
There is not core curriculum because remember, some kids are going to music. Some kids may be going to an intervention. Some kids may be going to the counselor. Some kids may be going to speech. So there's no core curriculum. But that's not to say that a teacher couldn't be meeting with a small group and reviewing the math lesson from the day before with students that may not have understood or the homework. Or a teacher may not be work, may be working with a small group. We use books called decodables or readable that one group of students may need some extra practice with. So they may be using those or a foundation's review. So I'm not saying that it's 100% MyPath or the iReady lessons. It is a mixture of what the teachers feel is best for the students. Typically, there's an ELA day and a math day and an ELA day and a math day.
And then I just have one other question, which is, you gave an example of, you know, a kid in sixth grade asking, why am I doing third-grade math? If I'm in sixth grade and obviously I'm doing sixth-grade math in my regular method. So I guess my question is, if that student is working on third-grade math in accelerate, how is that going to assist them on the NJSLA? Because the NJSLA that they're taking is going to be for a sixth grader, not for a third grader.
Because when they took the, when they took the diagnostic, they indicated that they didn't know those problems.
I understand, but my question is about.
We got, what I'll say, you have to close it, right? I mean, we can't just spend time on sixth grade if they don't have the core third grade that they're going to need to build off to get to sixth grade. So obviously, that could wind up being a tier-three student who's getting some intensive interventions to hopefully close that gap and gain those grade levels as quickly as we can.
Or it could be, or it could be four, it could be four lessons in iReady and 100% mastery and the student moves on. So it's just like that. So they're not doing the, the third-grade lessons for weeks on end. They, they just may be appearing into MyPath and they see it and they click through it. Well, every time they click through it and don't do it, that's essentially a red flag, right? So if they, that's why we have these conversations to say, I realize this is easy. You do these three lessons or four lessons in the next 25 minutes and you're done and you move on to four. And then you just keep closing those gaps and that's what the students need to be able to tell us. Because obviously, there was something on that test, whether they clicked through it or not, that gave us a red flag to say they didn't know this. So how, we need to make sure that they know it well enough that they want to do it. Was it too hard? They didn't feel like reading it? Because if they do those, if they have those strategies or they use those those techniques for iReady, who's to say they're not going to use them for NJSLA? Right? So that's the point. We want to make sure that they understand that this is what needs to be done to close those gaps.
So I, I wanted to ask an easy question and hopefully a secondary decent question. The first one is, how often are those data teams meeting? And then can you also, I know you talked a little bit about it, but I, I want to focus on the word team in there. And that that's giving our teachers, our professionals, the opportunity to really articulate and strategize. And can you talk about what that looks like?
So right now, so last year, we had two data team meetings just to have a meeting and look at data. We didn't have the same type of data, but the point was that we were all around the table. We looked at a spreadsheet. We talked about the students. You know, data can be, I want you to know that it's a treasure hunt and not a witch hunt, right? Data is very personal because I'm the teacher and I taught the math lesson and now my student is showing me that it didn't. So we need to make people comfortable with the fact that we are only here to help support the teacher and help support the student. So last year, we just had to have a conversation about what it is and this is what we're going to do. There's no stakes in the sense that we're just coming together. This year, we, we had, because of the way that the assessments fell and and it took longer, first year trying this, we had the whole month of September and then we extended it a little bit. So we had more of the informal data meetings. We, we met Peter and I and principals met with the standards with support teachers, we've met with teachers. But the idea is that coming, um, in January, the end of January, we'll have this formal data meeting that we had last year, but now we'll be looking at the data and we'll be looking at progressing growth. Um, so for now and for this year, those data team meetings will probably happen three, three times a year after the assessment, but that's not to say at any point in time the principal, me, Peter, or just the principal and me and the teachers or the teachers and the principal. It's again, a very fluid process where we have conversations. So that's really the point of it. The universal screening or the benchmarks are just the temperature check, right? They're, they're going to the doctor and Tony gives the great example, they're going to the doctor, you get all the tests done, great, okay. So your blood pressure's great, your temperature's great, but oh, your A1C is hot or something, I'm just making something up, right? So then we have to follow up with just that. So that's the same thing of a universal screener, right? We give all these different assessments, yep, you know, your letters and sounds, yep, you can read fluently. But you're having difficulty with the nonsense words. So, oh, nonsense words, dyslexia, like what does this mean? So that's really the point of universal screening and the benchmarks. And then your second question was, I feel like I'm on an interview, what was the second question?
They were, you got them both. It's, it's basically how often you did it and then how the teachers were in, involved in that process and, and really the, the team part of it.
Oh, absolutely. We can put together the rosters and run all the data, but you know, then we come to have a conversation, well, that student was in Paris for twelve days. Well, that's not a tier three student then, let's, let's give that child some time. Or that child just moved here, or they're new to South Hundred and let's give them some time. So we need to get the teachers in there teaching because that's what they need and the time, and then we see the growth.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, for the, for the audience, we'll have a point participation in a few minutes and she's missing, glad you'll be here. So you're welcome to ask your question to the board and if it's something that, that she can answer, we will, uh, we may call on her to do so. Mr. Graver, thank you for, you can go home if you need to go home. Say it's not, but anytime you're ready to go. Things want to mention before the superintendent's report, and then we'll do superintendent's report.
Yeah, so I have a bunch of things to update tonight, but before I do, I do want to acknowledge, hopefully, uh, you saw this come out on social media within the last week or so. Uh, but we did select our governor educator of the year award winners, we have a few in the audience this evening. So I just want to point out from the high school, we had Brian Riley, who I know is here in the back there. Uh, we also had Kristen Arturides, who's our speech pathologist. From our middle school on location, we had Yvonne Penna, who's a paraprofessional and Cindy Visick, who's a DSL teacher. And then, um, from our elementary school, also in the audience, Lindsay Jamison, who is in the back, back there, and then Melissa Portina. So just want to say huge congratulations. We do a formal recognition at our March meeting, we'll be inviting you back and the board will be recognizing you and we'll be saying some awesome things about you. But I did want to just congratulate you in public for the first time since you received your.
Lucky in this district to have amazing teachers, my kids have been blessed with amazing teachers and instructors.
All right, so there's three topics I want to provide updates on tonight. The first is preschool facility update. We had some questions last month about bus maintenance update, but I want to share some information about that. And then the board for the last several months, um, has been talking about athletic field expansion. So I wanted to share where we are with that. Uh, last Tuesday night, we had a, a pretty long work session. And the two topics for our work session were preschool facilities and kind of next steps on where we're going. And then the second one was athletic field expansion. So I just want to kind of give an update on preschool. Um, as I mentioned, really the, the focus of the session on the 10th was to focus more on short and long term facility options. So one of the solutions we talked about is more of a short term solution was status quo for next year. Meaning that we would house two classes at the elementary school and three classes at West Anwell. Uh, we then also discussed potential options still under consideration. But they do require additional research, collaboration, and information. So one of those options was a partnership with two local preschools, the Lamberville Academy and Happy Time, where we would house three preschool classes at the elementary school and then partner with the two local community partners. Um, and I have down there 26, 27, the reason being, so at our work session, we discussed that in the past, Lamberville Academy never had enough space to meet the state requirement of 950 square feet. Uh, they did reach out to me about two weeks ago to say that they were in conversations with St. Andrews to hopefully, um, perhaps take over an area of, you may be familiar with what was called the thrift store. Um, and develop that space into a classroom space that would meet the state requirements of the 950 square feet. So after our work session last week, I did talk to the director of the academy just to say kind of where are we with this, what are next steps? And she said that they're still working through it. Obviously, there's some still, some hurdles to go, to jump, you know, to jump through or jump over. But the plan would be to hopefully have that room available for preschool in September of 2026. Not this fall, but the fall after. Um, so obviously we still want to have, you know, that as a consideration. If that was the case, then we would be looking at the possible sale of the West Anwell School if we were no longer to use it. The other thing that the board talked about is the possibility of a renovation of a small portion of the West Anwell School for all five preschool classes with state funding. So we talked in our work session that last May, the state came out and they offered $33 million to school districts throughout the state of New Jersey, specifically focused on facility upgrades for preschool. So the board, you know, had conversations last week that, you know, could that be a possibility again? Would it happen? We don't know, right? That's kind of TBD, there's a lot of what ifs. So, you know, the board did want to keep that as, on the table as a potential option. But obviously it would be contingent upon state funding and what that would look like. I also just want to share, like, there could be other options too, right? Not just these two potential options that could emerge. Um, there are some things that we need to do some more research on, which we will and continue to provide updates. But I just wanted to share right now kind of where things stand based on the board work session last Tuesday night. All right, um, I wanted to follow up just about bus safety and Amanda Brown, who was our, uh, transportation coordinator. I asked her to be here tonight. So, you know, if you recall last month, we did have some concerns that were voiced as far as our buses and not being safe to be on the road. So we did dig into this pretty, uh, specifically and just wanted to kind of review the process so everyone is aware that buses are inspected every six months required by the New Jersey Motor Vehicle Commission, School Bus Inspection Unit. Um, they actually come here right to our site and inspect our buses. They came out in August and they're scheduled to come again after winter break. If a bus fails for something significant, it's taken off the road until it's fixed by the district. And then it has to be re-inspected before it can be used again on the road with students. We're also required to take our buses every three months for service. So if we don't get service every three months, there's the potential to be fined for each month that we have not had the service. So after working with Amanda and really kind of digging into it, um, you know, I, I just want to reiterate that at no time did we have any buses on the road that were not safe for our students. There is a document here, which I'll send out tomorrow to the community that literally has a link. And it goes through every bus that we have and exactly the inspection process, what was found, when it was re-inspected and detailed bus by bus. Um, so I just kind of want to reassure folks of that. You know, I think there were some concerns expressed in the meeting about a personnel issue. While I can't talk about in public, I would be want to let everyone know that we did address that, you know, as a district and as the Board of Education. But again, I just kind of want to reassure folks that all of our buses follow strict protocols, what we have to do as far as their inspections and, you know, being on the road safe for our students. And I'm confident in everything that Amanda Brown is doing on a daily basis to ensure that our buses are maintained and safe for our students. I wanted to provide an update on that. And again, I'll be sending this out along with you know, and presentation tomorrow so folks can dig into it a little further. So this is a topic of conversation that really goes back three years. Because when we, the board committed to the referendum, the discussion was really around, okay, if this becomes a 512 campus, what can we do to expand athletic opportunities as far as field space for our middle school? With the goal in mind that hopefully to try to keep as many teams as we possibly can onsite. So if you're a parent of a middle schooler, um, you know that depending upon what the sport is, whether it's in the fall or the spring, there's a good possibility that your child each and every day at the end of the school day is getting on a bus and either going to Hewitt Park or going to Lenape Park in Flemington or different places because we do have a, a crunch as far as field space. So what the board started to investigate was what are our options? What could we look at in reference to possible scenarios that would solve the problems? So the two that we really looked at were specifically, what if we cleared out an additional area behind the middle school that right now is wooded? Um, and we look to develop additional middle school fields. What would that look like? What would that cost? Were there ramifications? How long would it take? And then we also started to have a conversation about what if turf was added to our existing football field? What could that do on a daily basis as far as expanding opportunities for, first of all, equity among our sports? And also the hope that more practices could take place on school grounds rather than having to be bussed off, depending upon the season and the score. So I want to kind of just dig in on what we found out. This involves some engineering work to really take a look at our sites, working with vendors to get pricing and, and try to compare where we would land. So before we do that, I do want to just remind folks though, as part of our middle school project, we are getting a new middle, or new varsity softball field, right? That is part of the middle school construction right now. It was part of the referendum. So I know it might be a little bit tough to see, um, but you can kind of see from this diagram here. Here's where the school is being built and then this is where the field will be, so home plate here, here going out to the outfield. Um, the goal right now is for our contractor, who's currently building the school, to have the new varsity softball field built by the end of February. That would mean actual field built, backstop fencing would all be finished by the end of February. At the November Board of Education meeting, on our finance agenda, the board approved the purchase and installation of sod for the new softball field. Obviously, by building it in February, we're not going to be able to grow grass in the outfield for where we need to grow grass in order to use it for the spring. We recognize that our softball team has been offsite. So we wanted to do everything possible to make sure they could get use out of the field this upcoming season. So the board did approve the purchase and installation of the sod. Um, we're hoping to install the sod. And you can see on the diagram below, basically where it's highlighted in yellow, that's where all the sod is going to go. All right, the remaining area will be normal clay that you would have on a softball infield. So the goal would be hopefully weather dependent, sometime in late March, we would be able to install the sod. Um, once we install the sod, it needs about a month for it to take before we actually can start using it for practicing games. We have our facilities department has set up a system for watering the sod. So when it goes down, if you're familiar with sod, obviously you need to keep it watered. Um, so it takes, and then as part of the new field, we also will have a new solar scoreboard that will be out in that field that will be installed for the season. Uh, and then some other things as well. Um, we will eventually have dugouts, permanent dugouts. We may use something more temporary for the upcoming season. And then during summer, when it's a little warmer and we're pouring concrete slabs and things along those lines for the dugouts, um, we'll do it during that time. We also have electric runs, so we can use the pitching, uh, machine and the batting cage for the softball that was run as part of the project. So, you know, if all goes well, and again, it's really weather dependent. Hopefully by the end of April, we'll be able to get on that field and use it for the remainder of the season. So I did want to put that out there again, this is separate from the rest of the conversation we're going to have because all of this was funded through the referendum and there will be a new varsity softball field.
That, that field is a replacement though, right? We always had.
We always had one in a different location, right? All right, so what's our current situation? And for some folks in the room, you know this better than I do. So for middle school sports right now, girls and boys soccer are offsite at Hewitt Park for games and practices. The middle school field hockey team is onsite and they typically will practice in the area more right field of our varsity baseball field. In the springtime, our baseball team is offsite at Lenape Park in Flemington. And our middle school softball is offsite at Hewitt Park. So we got a lot of transportation and a lot of movement of as far as our students go each and every day to their various locations. So we looked at, what if we take, so here's the new middle school. We have a huge area still that's wooded. What if we took that area, we cleared it and we developed a new softball field with dugouts and a scoreboard? And then some type of multipurpose field. So if you can kind of get an idea of the schools here, all right, this would be the new softball field. All right, with the fencing that would go around, the temporary fencing. And then what we have in here is we have like a multipurpose field. Now, the multipurpose field would only be about 50 yards wide, that's all we could fit. And then a hundred yards wide, so, or a hundred yards long. So with that, you know, we could use it for some practice areas, but more than likely, we wouldn't be able to use it for actual games, especially for boys and girls soccer. It's just not wide enough, all right? And there's some challenges here, back in the wooded area, there is, if you kind of look along here to back lines, this is wetlands delineation. So we really don't want to mess with that, right? With the wetlands, we want to leave it as such. So we do have a limited amount of space which we could develop. We also know that we right now currently have our cross-country path back in that area. So obviously the more trees that we take out, that could potentially impact as what, that as well. When we looked at cost estimates, the board had questions about, all right, what if we did, you know, a, um, softball field in a multipurpose? What would it cost? What if we just did a softball field without a multipurpose? So if we, if we did both, the estimated cost would be between 1.6 and $2 million. We would need additional design costs, so all of our permits, construction documents, drawings, bid documents, oversight of the project would be an additional 96,640. So the total cost estimate you can see there, you know, the 1696640 between $2 million. Um, paying upon where things come in once we went out the bid. What if we just did a softball field? So we estimated a softball field only would give us somewhere between about one to 1.1 million, 1.1 million dollars plus the additional design costs. So you're looking at, you know, 1,196640 just for softball. So what, how does that help us, right? So if we had softball and multipurpose behind the new middle school and we cleared out all the woods, what it would mean is that the high school boys and girls soccer teams would more than likely probably split the soccer field. Um, football practices would probably more than likely be on the football field. Keep in mind with the football field, because it is grass, it's not like we can have multiple teams on it and continuing to practice and play games each and every day because obviously it takes a pounding and there could be repercussions of that. Middle school boys or girls might be able to practice on the multipurpose field, but again, they would be offsite for games, right? So maybe the middle school girls are back there, the boys would be offsite for practice. If the girls and the boys have games, that field would not be big enough to play games on. The middle school field hockey practice would be on the all-purpose field, as we call it, which is really our right field of our baseball field. And then the high school field hockey practice would be on the varsity field hockey field. In the spring, the new softball field that we would build behind the, the, the middle school obviously could be used for middle school softball, baseball would still be offsite. Maybe there were some days where varsity was away, so they could practice on their field. We do plan on next year, when we open it up to 58 building, having a middle school track program. So middle school and high school track would be on the track. And then high school baseball would be on the varsity baseball field and high school softball and the varsity softball field. If we just did a softball field and no multipurpose to try to save money, again, looking at a fall season, boys and girls would probably split the soccer field, football practice would be on the football field. Middle school boys and girls would have to go offsite for practice and games because we would not have a multipurpose. And then middle school field hockey would continue to use that area out in right field of the baseball field. And high school field hockey would practice on the varsity field hockey field. In the spring, obviously, middle school field hockey would be on the, or I'm sorry, middle school softball would be on the new field behind the middle school. Baseball will be offsite, maybe onsite the days that varsity was away. Track would be together, middle school and high school on the track and then baseball and varsity softball on their fields. So that's kind of the breakdown of what it would look like if we develop the land space, you know, clearing out all the trees and trying to develop. So that's kind of the breakdown of what it would look like if we develop the land space, you know, clearing out all the trees and trying to develop additional fields behind the new middle school. Then we looked at turf. So what does turf do if we added it to our existing football field? Right? This is a rendering by a company called Athletic Field of America. We basically worked with two different contractors to look at what would the price would be, what would it entail? Um. So what does this look like? You'll notice, let me point out something first off. You may not have noticed though. This would also have beyond. You know, the football field, we also have the diamond for softball. For girls softball, so you can do that on a turf field and I'll, I'll get into that a little bit deeper. We would have the lines for boys and girls soccer. We also would have the lines for field hockey. So everyone would get access to turf in some capacity, whether it was practices, games, or whatever it may be. So there's two different types of turf that we looked at. The first type of turf is basically the infill turf. So if you're familiar with turf. Which you probably are because the majority of the schools in our conferences have it. Um, you have the little rubber pebbles, right? That are inside of it. That's called infill. It's in the turf. Typically, if your child has a game and they come home, they're probably going to have some of it on their legs or their socks or their cleats. Alright, so we looked at that version of the turf first. Basically with that, you see a list of everything that would be included. So keep in mind, if we are going to do softball here, right? And we have track that's going around the track at the same time in the spring, we would need to have netting built into the. The construction so that obviously everyone's safe, right? If there's foul balls or a ball's hit. It's not going to hit anyone who's running on the track or doing the high jump or whatever it may be, right? We need to take that all into consideration. So this quote here that you see includes all that. So you can kind of get an idea if you see here, it's the type of netting that would be all along the first and the third base lines. There would be a portable backstop that we would use. This type of turf also requires this item up here, it's a sweeper. So you've got to sweep the turf that has the infill periodically and maintain it. So that's something we would have to purchase. Now, obviously we would utilize it within our maintenance department. There's a lot of, you know, all the engineering, the permits going through DRCC like we did for some of our other projects. That's all included in this price, um, along with all the portable things that we would need. As far as the bases, you know, the netting that I mentioned, the ground sweeper and the groomer. Um, typically on a turf like this, you're looking at. An eight-year warranty for the company, but the expectation for life is usually ten to twelve years. And it would take somewhere between eight to ten weeks to complete. Alright, and be ready to go. So in theory, think about it, right now our field has a crown on it. They would be taking the crown out and literally making the field flat. So it could be utilized for all different sports and not just football. Option two. So there's a new type of turf and I actually have it right here. It's called a pivot turf and it has no infill. Alright, so it's more spongy here. The thought process behind the technology with this is it's safer for things like quick movements. So if you're going to turn with ankles and knees and hips. Um, compared to plays much more like grass. And more of the turf that you may have seen before that your kids have played on. So we wanted to get an idea of what does that look like? Just because there's no maintenance with the infill, quite honestly, it's more environmentally friendly because there's not the rubber. Infill that's inside that you hear a lot about. Um, so we wanted to get an idea of what that would look like. So the price for that, you can see here. Uh, which is more than the option one, uh, includes literally everything on the slide before. All this would go into it, the netting, everything. The only thing it doesn't include is the sweeper because we don't need it. The only maintenance for the field is a backpack blower when there's leaves on it to really blow it off. Um, other than that, there's nothing else you need to do to maintain the field. It does include an eight-year warranty as well, but the life expectancy is longer. So this turf, um, lasts anywhere between twelve to fifteen years. And because of the fact that. We don't have as many sports as some other schools, we may even get more time out of that. The reality is when you really research turf and look at it, the one sport that has the biggest impact on the life expectancy of a turf is lacrosse. So just the cutting, the different things that lacrosse, it really takes a toll and obviously it's not something we have. Um, for options one and two, as I mentioned before, there's the crown, they'll be taking that and flattening and taking dirt out. So they're going to be removing six thousand, one hundred and sixty-six yards of soil. And we actually are going to keep that and use it in a variety of different places on our campus here that we needed. For leveling and things like that. By doing that and keeping that in-house, it will save us three hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars. So if we weren't able to utilize that, it would have been three hundred and fifty-one, eight hundred and thirty-one on top of the prices that I shared for options one and two. But we'll be using that. Our own maintenance crew is going to be running trucks. The contractors agreed to load up the trucks for us. And then we'll relocate it to the areas that we need to, spread it and do everything we need to do so we can keep it on site. We were, we're working with two contractors throughout this process, Athletic Fields of America. Then there's another company called Heelis, but quite honestly, Heelis pricing just did not come anywhere near where this vendor did. They were a good three or four hundred thousand dollars or more. So how does this help us? Right? So this is just kind of an idea of, of an average practice day in the fall season. So let's say boys and girls soccer splits the turf, right? There's one on one half, there's one on the other. Football could practice maybe behind the field or offsite depending upon what their activities were for that day. Um, middle school boys and girls soccer could practice on the grass soccer field and take an end on each one of those fields. Middle school field hockey practice can stay where they are out in right field of the outfield. High school field hockey practice can be on their own varsity field. It would mean that everyone would be done onsite for late buses at five fifteen P M. And I'll just share like just as far as competitive equity. South Hundred and Belvidere are the only two schools out of the twenty-four in our conference right now that don't have turf. Everyone else does. So you know, when you talk to our coaches. You could look at that both ways, right? Maybe it's an advantage for us. Because schools come here and play on grass and they're not used to playing on grass. But for us, when we go there, obviously we're not necessarily used to playing on turf because we don't practice on a daily basis. So it will give us that equity. When we look at the spring season. We would look at using the turf for middle school softball. Obviously I just mentioned how we're going to be building a brand new, you know. Uh, varsity softball field as part of the five eight project. So that would be our varsity softball field. Middle school would go on the turf so they can stay on site. Baseball's still a challenge. Right? We can't use the other end of the turf. It's just not big enough for how far he hit a baseball. So that's still going to be a challenge where we would have to go offsite other than days where varsity is away. Middle school and high school track. Um, varsity baseball field for, you know, for the spring season and then the varsity softball field. So you know, baseball's still something that we have to pick a look at. And then irrigation. So if you're not aware. Right now we have irrigation on every field except the field hockey field. If you're a field hockey parent, you know how bad that was this season. Because of the drought, we got to the point where that field was almost deemed unplayable by the end of the season because it was so bad. So what we would do is our maintenance staff would take the irrigation that's currently on the football field. Reroute it and run it to the field hockey field this summer. Which means that all of our grass fields, the field hockey field, the soccer field, the outfields of the new. Softball field and then the right, you know, the outfield of the baseball field, all would have irrigation. So no matter what we dealt with as far as droughts and things along those lines, we would have a water source. And hopefully never get into the situation where we were in this year. Where not only was it a challenge to play on it, but now the work that we had to do after the season to try to get it ready for next year. Was pretty significant because it was in such bad shape. So after much deliberation, um, and discussions about this, the board has decided. That it would like to move forward with installing turf on the football field, starting the day after graduation, June seventeenth. So we'll be ready for the two thousand twenty-five fall athletic season. The quote that we had is on our finance agenda tonight for approval for the board, recommended for approval. We did decide to go with the option two with no infill for a lot of different reasons that I already shared before. Um, the vendor that we're working with, Athletic Fields of America, isn't a co-op. So what that means is we don't need to go out the bid because a co-op is when. A bunch of different districts come together and the goal of a co-op is to get the best pricing we possibly can. So it all falls under what's called state contracts. So we're ensuring that we're getting the best, the best pricing. The board would pay for this using our capital reserve account and financing the project over a period of three years. So. Um, the goal would be obviously to start the day after graduation. Work through it and have it ready for when our fall athletic season was ready to start in late August. The other thing that I want to mention, we actually got this idea, we stole it from Del Val. So Del Val, if you're not aware, just put in turf about two years ago. So some of the questions that have come up was, okay, you have turf and it lasts for twelve to fifteen years. Pal, as a board, you plan for that. So eventually financially, when you have to replace the turf. What is that going to look like now? When you have to replace the turf, it's not going to be the amount of money that we would be spending now because there's a lot of infrastructure. That would, uh, we're doing now. It's more just taking the turf off and putting new turf down. So what Del Val did was they kind of launched this whole campaign of sponsorships. And they had different levels of sponsorships. Whether it was, if you go to Del Val, you'll see, I think it's St. Luke's Hospital, which, right? Which is on the turf, which I think they got twenty-five thousand dollars for. There's signage around the perimeter of the football field inside the fencing. Local businesses advertised. There's a lot of different levels. So this is something the school and community committee of the board. As you know, dedicated time will be allocated to this over the coming months. To talk about, you know, if we did this, what it would look like, how we launch it. And then would that money could be kind of earmarked for a fund later on. So ten, twelve years down the road or fifteen years down the road. If we had to replace the turf, we would be building up that funding through the sponsorship. And be able to utilize that as part of our capital reserve account to replace the turf. So we're not worrying about that. Or burdening another board ad down the road, you know, fifteen years down the road. I also want to mention too, just quickly. So, and I know Jim has more of the history on it because this was before I was here, but. When they built the field out there with the track. Um, it was built with the infrastructure to eventually have turf. So all the underground drainage and the detention basins and all the things that went into that. Obviously will save us money now. So when the contractor comes in. The infrastructure is there. It's more just running piping underneath the field and connecting into those basins that already exist. So that was very helpful. Obviously the board at the time, that was good planning for down the road if the decision was ever made. And we weren't starting from scratch and all those things were in place already. Questions from the board?
Don't you think, uh, for your dimension and also savings to the maintenance over twelve, fifteen years of that deal? With lying and all the stuff for the, the line and you have to lie. Everything like that, the grass cutting, everything will be saved. So that money can also be. Uh, saved to help like a turf in replacement and also the money I can save from. Keeping everyone on here basically campus except possibly the baseball. Which I believe is our cost for the year, about fifteen grand right now. And I don't want to guess, but I'm assuming if really lucky, one team, it's going to be significantly saving, probably ten grand, yeah, fifteen. Um, also, but you're very also that could be, you know, fun and place.
Those are all, yep, things that go.
And I also was very happy hearing that we could highlight other teams at night under the lights, um, and perhaps. Bringing an admission cost for those teams as well as our football.
That would help our football. You know, being able to, you know, charge for a night game or something like that for fifty fifty. Backshot, things like that would help also offset costs. District for uniforms, things like that. If you go lay, lay back into the end of the fourth to play at night.
And it creates equity given the sports, uh, yeah, that's.
Yeah, I mean, the theory, you know, if you think about our, our football field, you know. Is maybe used seven times. A year, eight times a year, right? And typically have four home games. Maybe a playoff game if we're fortunate enough with football. We typically will play maybe one or two soccer games. As like a senior night and that's it. Really for, and then the spring, other than, you know, maybe some kids running around between the track and all, but. So now, yeah, it would probably be used six days a week. You know, fall and spring.
So I, I think as an isolated project on its own, there's a, a lot of very good merits on it. Um. You know, and I was initially like, what? We're going to do what? When we first talked about it? Um, so there are a lot of good merits about it. But in terms of context of. Where we are with lots of capital projects lately, could we, we should talk a little bit about sort of. Turf on its own sounds great. Lots of savings, equity sports. Maybe if we could also talk through just a little bit about like status quo and. Not doing it right now. Cause I think you guys said you booked into this pricing before and like this is a really good price right now for this and that. Talk a little bit about if we were to wait, what?
Yeah, there's, there's no guarantees, right? We have a timeline here. Where, you know, if we don't move on this, more than likely after January one, the pricing will go up for a lot of different reasons. Um, and if we were to wait another year. I have no idea what they'll be at that point. We did a lot to work with the vendor to get it to where, where months.
Right.
To get it to where.
And this contract right now will secure us this, this price.
Correct.
For this one.
Correct.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you for the report. Um, with that, reading that, so I can read. Um, we now, uh, we will have a period of public comment. So our bylaws as a, as a board of education, we have, actually have five laws. The bylaws do, uh, allow us to have a period of public comment. We typically do two, one. One at this time and then one later in the meeting after we had gone through our committee session. Um, those are open for the public to say, to come and talk about anything that you have concerns about. Uh, we ask that you address your comments. To the board, that you make your comments in the form of a statement. It is not intended to be back and forth conversation. But if you have a question and you ask it and it's something that can be easily answered tonight, we will try to do so. Otherwise we will get back to you with an answer. Um, I'm going to read this. We have procedures and requirements that include standard conduct. That need to be followed by members of the public during public comments. If a member of the public becomes disruptive during a public meeting. Including during any period for public comment, the member of the board charged with running the public meetings. So warn the disruptive member of the public that continued disruption may result in being prevented from speaking during the public meeting. Or removed from the public meeting. Disruptive conduct includes sustained inappropriate behavior such as, but not necessarily limited to shouting, interruption. And the use of profanity or comments seen as abusive, obscene, or just defamatory. Uh, no participant may speak more than once during each public comment session. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for maximum three minutes during this portion of the meeting. Um, so we invite you to come up to the podium. Uh, state your name, the municipality that you're from and, uh. And then let us hear your thoughts. And so we do have a timer, we'll keep track of your time. Uh, at the end of the three minutes, the buzzer is going to go off. So with that, uh, public comment period is open. Is, uh, anybody, uh, have something they'd like to bring before the board?
Christopher Beak, uh, West Hamel Township. Um, Amanda has been great with busing. A lot of questions that I've had with her. Uh, she's obviously new. So there's nothing that can be blamed on her. Um, I just have, uh. Just a couple of quick statements like. As for the inspection, that is like a bare minimum safety inspection. So like that only tells us so much about the buses, obviously, is one thing, uh. The other thing is, uh, still busing four schools. We're busing three schools right now. And, uh, we're barely making it. My son is, uh. At school for twenty-five minutes after the bell rings and then. You know, I just don't understand that. It was like no foresight in the busing before even Amanda got a hold of them. Um, that's a big problem in my opinion. Like, why is my son still there? Um, we have, we have it timed. I've checked, uh. The other thing is like, where's the accountability? We talk about accountability for our students, right? About testing and everything else. Our accountability needs to be brought to a higher level. Especially when it comes for this transportation, since we're transporting all these kids all over the place. We need to do better and we also need to figure out. How we're going to do it and how many buses we're going to need and all that stuff. I just don't see how we're going to be able to bus four schools all at once, pretty much for the most part, when we can barely do three. Um, that's pretty much it. Um, again, Amanda has been great. I think she's a great, um. She's added like, you know, a friendliness about everything. She knows her job well. Um, I've worked with her and she has been great with everything that she does. She needs, uh, support, help from you guys. For this to, you know, flourish and make sure that we're all safe. With, uh, she needs the help. That's all. Alright, thank you.
Appreciate the comment. Happy holidays. Anybody else have, uh, anything they'd like to bring before the board?
Good evening, Aaron Bayla of West Hamel.
Good evening, Aaron Baylog, West Amwell. Um. Question for Jane Ellen. So the um accelerate program looks really great, I think. Um, you know. One of my children would have benefited from that program. Being in that twenty percent for various subjects. Um. So. Sorry.
Hear you if you're speaking into the microphone, but you can.
Yeah, you got me. All right. So I I like the accelerate program. What I what I don't see there is any mention and maybe um there's other programs that address this. Is any. Thing directed towards the kids that are. Getting material very easily and sort of overachieve, right? So is there a tier zero for ten to fifteen percent of kids? Right? And two of my kids. Um, benefited from such a program, West Amwell. I don't remember what we called it back then, Little or Mr. Parrish might remember. But um, two of my kids were in that and they flourished greatly under that program. And so. You have eighty percent of the kids kind of grouped into fully performing, if you will. There's got to be a percentage of that that could benefit from being challenged in other ways. And so I don't know if there's any way to do that with that program or you have anything else in place to challenge those kids, right? You can't leave the twenty percent behind. But you should challenge the fifteen or twenty percent that would benefit from a push, right? To to think in different ways and. Um, you know, learn new skills, so. I don't know if you can address that here tonight, but that's one comment.
You have more than one question?
I have, I won't put it in, I won't put it in three minutes, but if you want to address that, go ahead.
No, 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 no.
So we'll address that.
Okay, the other, the other question, it's more of a comment about the sports field, right? I came here tonight ready to say, eh, what do we spend money on turf for? Okay, leaves a bad taste in my mouth that we're going to spend that much money. On a district that I think is underperforming academically. Academics has to come first, right? I understand. The facilities money, the capital reserve, it can't be spent on other things, right? You can't spend it on curriculum. You can't spend it on computers, other stuff like that. So. After seeing your presentation, Tony, I understand why you're considering it because of the cost to put in these fields. Sports is part of the education. And so, you know, I came in here ready to say no to it, but I think the plan you've put forward is a pretty good one. I'm only concerned about capital reserve. So you're going to pay it over three years. What's the five-year plan for the school for facilities? Do you have the money to cover unexpected costs in there? What percentage of the capital reserve is going to be spent each of those three years on this turf?
Alright, so.
Why don't we want to talk about.
For a couple of minutes about the enrichment of the children.
During accelerate.
Um, so.
Yeah, just so people at home can hear you.
So, and I didn't get into too much of it, but that accelerate block is exactly what we use for G and T. So um, our G and T teachers do pull the children during that accelerate block. So any student that has been identified as a gifted and talented student, previously known as enrichment. Does meet with the gifted and talented teacher during that time. It is also um during that time where extension and enrichment activities can occur. Um, and the teachers naturally do that within the own, their core curriculum. So all students' needs are met um to extend and enrich, not only to support.
And just Andrew will follow up because we're in the process of obtaining the financing for the turf and then we'll have a better answer as far as. Capital and how much will we left and all those different pieces.
Or his second question, if I could just chime in for one thing. Uh, since you referenced in academically un. Underperforming, um, one of the opportunities in in going with the turf is that we are going to get back instructional time. So when we are not bussing kids off site. We actually have the ability to to keep them in the building and in class longer. So they don't have to leave early, whether it's five minutes or ten minutes beforehand. We keep them in instruction longer, so there there's academic benefits to it as well.
Does anyone else have a comment they'd like to bring before the board?
Hi, I'm Christie O'Keefe with West Amwell. Um, I just wondered if anybody on the board had looked into the health hazard that turf is. Because it's really very concerning to me. There is, it's full of um forever chemicals. You're not going to get around that. Um, there's endocrine disruptors. You know, it's carcinogen, um, neurotoxin. It's all going to contain uh bacteria. Turf is known to contain bacteria and it's got a higher risk of skin infections. You're going to be spreading staff. So I just hope that that's really, I mean, that's really a concern for, I don't like my kid playing on turf. Um, so I hope that really just look into it. You can do like a quick Google search and see. The issues that a a turf field causes. Um, and then also I just wanted to say, I really hope you don't keep. West Amwell Elementary School open for any reason because you're going to have a very large group of ticked off citizens. Because we were told that school would be closed and we were told it could not be renovated. And we voted on the referendum as such. I don't know where all this money is going to be coming from. We don't have it. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Happy holidays. Does anyone else have a comment they'd like to bring?
Hi, Denise Baylog from West Amwell Township. Um, first, I'd like to thank the board for actually expediting, like getting the softball team back on our turf. And our fields here. So I know that they're very appreciative of it and we're looking forward to being back on our field. So thank you very much. Um, so following up with Christie, um, so I also believe that West Amwell School should be closed. My kids went there. I don't want to see it closed, but we voted on this as a community that it should be closed. And it was proposed by the board in February of twenty twenty one. It was a Zoom meeting and I do have a. A copy of the slide that was presented that a proposal was to sell West Amwell School. It was estimated that the school could be sold for about one and a half to one point six million dollars. And those um monies could be used to offset the taxes, the tax increase that we have as a result of building this new school. This middle school. So um, I feel strongly that we should go with what was proposed uh previously. Um, although it wasn't stated in the referendum, the referendum read as such that we would be a three-school system. And furthermore, um, not mentioned tonight, it's really, really concerning. I was at that meeting on Tuesday, the working session. We neglected to talk about the one for dioxane that was found in the water at West Amwell School. Um, I know that the parts per million were not disclosed, so I don't know like what the risk is. I know that they immediately went to bottled water. There still was probably some exposure to the children before you found out, you know, that there was contaminated water sources. If you look it up on the CDC and the material safety data sheets, you'll see that it's a known carcinogen. Um, so you're taking care of the ingestion of it, but you're not addressing the toxicity that you get through. Like the exposure through skin. It's still in the water, the hand washing pediatric children, you know, pediatrics. Have a larger body surface area to wait and the systemic exposure to anything is greatly enhanced. And you're looking at putting our smallest kids. I used to work at a hospital, a children's hospital, and I know the systemic exposure is so great. So please consider that and don't delay it. Don't kick it down the road. Look at not using that school. We have other options. We can shift around, you know, the classrooms. We can increase maybe class sizes and certain grades. Um, there's a lot of options and you're only proposing one. Just push it down the road, but you're going to have to address it at some point. And why not do it now? Thank you.
One thing I wanted to follow. Just a couple of things about that, just so everyone's aware. Um. I did send out two communications. They're actually on our website under the latest news. And within that, it does show the findings of the results or the levels that you're looking for. Everything else are right there that are available. And we're working with DEP, right? DEP is kind of driving this. And um, we're following all the protocols that they put in place. So I'll be communicating more about this after winter break. Uh, but I just want to make people aware that those levels and all that information is available on our website.
So do we have an understanding of the timeline of like how long that it would have been there? Like, we don't have any way of knowing that.
It was tested in July and then once again in October, so.
Because it just occurred to me the other day that while we communicated about here. We're only with our current district families and I don't like. Should people know that it's been to the school? Like, I don't. I don't know. I don't know if there's anything else we could be, we could be.
As far as anyone else within the area, residents wise, the DEP people, as they would be. Reaching out and contacting local residents.
Other people who dwell.
Correct, there is, there is. Not to worry.
Which one I think Jen, maybe me and students who previously went through West Amwell. Like, I kind of think about the families, like, you know, adjacent. Should we be managing any communication that way? Is there any risk or concern or would DEP kind of guide that? Tell us.
They have, and I'm just trying to think how we would do that. Are we talking like maybe students that were there ten, twelve years ago? I I mean, I just, I can't speculate if they were there or wasn't because we were testing.
We don't know. Okay, so we're.
I just don't want to put out information. I'm not accurate.
Yeah, okay. We don't, we don't know if anybody else was, we we just know that it was found at this time, point in time.
Correct.
Any, okay, that's that's it for that. So the public, this is your time, folks. I'm sorry. So anyone else have a a a comment that they'd like to bring before the board?
Good evening, Andrea Little from West Amwell Township. Last week, uh, I had the pleasure of joining and listening to your work session with the board. Uh, it was nice at the board that the public was able to attend and listen. To the superintendent's recommendations, um, as well as to hear really great dialogue between the board members. Um, that was really insightful that you had the opportunity and for us to hear uh your great questions. Based on. That meeting, um, there was a lot of conversation of really asking for some actual data. To be able to back up a lot of the expenditures that were part of last week's meeting. Uh, so there were a lot of questions from the board as well as the public wanting to have more details. Of understanding like the budget from bottom up to be able to understand. The decisions that you're going to be choosing to make for the pre-K, um. Potentially a fourth building, even if it's just for kicking around for one year, um, and or long-term choices. Um. Last week Martha had said, oh, is it status quo spending? Um, because you're for, you know, you've got that building going on now. You're going to have it again uh for next year. Is it the same? And the answer was yes, except for potentially forty four hundred dollars in utilities. It's actually not status quo because, and we didn't have an opportunity to really have a dialogue after that. But well, next year we'll have the fourth building open, the new school. So that wasn't in this year's budget. That's in next year's budget, budget. So we don't have a budget out there stating that we're going to have status quo this year versus next year. So that's really something, again, that if we had more bottom-up accounting to be able to understand, be able for you to make a vote. Of what um, what does it mean to the public on our expenditure um responsibility? So one thing that also came up was I had asked if there was anything having to do with. The um document that said, oh, this is what preschool pays for. It's all covered. Um, so I did find that in March's um agenda from March twenty four, twenty four. And it did not include any building repairs, maintenance, um, bussing for that school. Or cleaning of the outside. Custodial was like, maybe you're going to afford one custodial there in that budget. Maybe you have part-time security. Um, so all of that was not included in that. So I just asked before you make a vote for preschool. That you consider all those options because we can afford to have pre-K through four at the school. Um, that was what it was designed to do and that's what we really should be doing for the community and having three schools. And then just as for the um turf, I didn't learn that that turf is made in the USA. I know that was a big conversation of why you needed a brush for tonight. Thank you very much.
Alright, folks, your uh, your time. Is there anyone else who has something they'd like to bring before the board? We have no one else in the audience.
One at home.
I say something about the transportation. Um, as a student, I can't answer why the transportation is late. But I can say as a senior in high school, I've been on the bus for the past six years. I've ridden. Um, the bus numerous times from sports to home to school from the bus. Um, so I can give a clear definition like from seventh grade to eighth. I personally have been on the bus all six years. I've never had problems. Um, yeah, so the superintendent, the superintendent previously saved up their buses or I checked. Each six, like regularly. So I'm sure that the buses themselves are safe. On the bus, I feel safe as well. And I feel like at seventh grader, like even for people. So I was like in the seventh grader, I am like. Subconscious me worried about my surroundings. I was a bus driver. I'm more aware, I feel like, and we're understanding if I could say or not.
Would you have somebody from home?
Yep, Jen Andrew Ole from West Amwell. I'd like to request a hold on all non-essential spending until we have a final decision on the pre-K issue. This includes any field work which appears to have a potential cost of more than three million dollars. Our community is being financed and drained by the district by the dramatic increases in spending over the last several years. BOE has fiduciary responsibility to the community and it's high time we hold the line on that.
Uh, any, so there will be another. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I believe what Kevin said was that Mrs. Andrew Lee commented that we should hold on any field spending of over three million dollars. Uh, the these uh, the turf field that we discussed tonight is not going to cost three million dollars. Going to cost something around one point two billion dollars. Um, so I think he was just clarifying. Verifying false information, I would say, well. In any case, uh, if that is uh. That will, we will close this. That's it for everybody for right now. We'll close this first period of public comment. We will have a second one later in the meeting. Thank you very much. And with that, we will move to our committee reports and we'll start, Kevin, with the floating grounds, transportation, financing, safety. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening and have a nice holiday.
A lot of talk with obviously about the preschool and basically their turf fields, not really much else when they had approval of some. Just some spending, some new mature money for the referendum and stuff like that. So but mainly the full discussion was obviously on the preschool and the turf, which are in a high priority right now with our district. Um, so with that being said. I'd like to move A through H for approval.
So now we're going to approve A through K. Uh, do I have a second, please?
Second.
Second, five, it's a little weird. Thank you. Uh, any discussion on items A through K?
But to clarify the contract tonight for turf that guarantees that we're doing the project or is that just simple?
Guarantees we're locking in the price.
Right.
We haven't signed it as of yet. So that's something, you know, once we get secure the financing and everything, we will do, but by the board approving this, it locks in that price.
We, depending on financing, for example, is there a way for the board to not report the project?
I would hope that, yeah, I mean, it just, no, uh, not a penalty, but I would hope that. If the board does vote to approve it, my the plan would be that we'd be moving forward unless something unforeseen, which I don't anticipate.
So just to clarify, you're proving moving forward to secure finance.
Correct.
So. That is, it it's a full group.
Does it include signing the contract with the turf company?
We will send it to the board of bruiser.
Okay. Is tonight approving that?
Yes.
So it's the board approves it tonight. This, then you as the school district will have the authority to move forward, sign the contract with the turf.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions on items A through K for field or anything else? Would note, we do have the item I is a memorandum of understanding. It's an arrangement we have. Should there ever be any emergency, uh, we will be using the uh. Uh, the county fairgrounds. Uh, at the end of West Amwell as a, as a pickup place if we ever have to evacuate. Uh, the county fairgrounds, uh, at the end of West Amwell as a, as a pickup place if we ever have to evacuate the school. It's, you know, we take kids there. Um, and that would be a place where parents would be able to pick them up if there were some sort of emergency. That required that sort of thing. So this is just a agreement with the county to do that allows us to do that. There we go. Any other, any other questions, comments? Okay, then let's vote.
Starting with Jennifer Bachelor.
I just have to point out and say that building the ground and finance is a huge committee and we need to better with our committee report. I, I just think it's unfair to say we talked about a lot of stuff and we're about to approve a ton of money.
Oh, science, I'll need to reiterate everything.
My vote is no.
Martha Dennis?
Yes.
Gina Bichetti?
Yes.
Brian Keys?
Yes.
Kevin Kovalaski?
Yeah.
Aaron O'Leary?
Yes.
Michael Strauss?
Yes.
Ronnie Todd Moreno?
Yeah.
Tim Gallant?
Yes.
Uh, let's see, um. Oh, personnel, I'm sorry.
Personnel committee met on September eleven. At the meeting, we discussed the personnel agenda for this meeting. Um, including reviewing the superintendent's recommendations for equipment, presentations, technical adjustments. Um, in addition, we reviewed recommendations for extracurricular stipend appointments. Um, superintendent advised the committee of current openings in the district, which currently include kindergarten teacher. From February third to the end of the year. Um, a fourth grade teacher from January twenty first, twenty five through the end of the year. And a learning disabilities teaching consultant, May twenty twenty five, as well as. In addition, the superintendent discussed process related to my teachers of the year applying their dominoes and educator of the year. We discussed the personnel issue, district reconfiguration, and upcoming uh SH R A. Yes, I would like to.
Actually, that would be items A and B. Um, so moved. Do we have a second, please? Second by Kevin, thank you. Any discussion on items A and B? Uh, any discussion? I would just note that uh, the. Uh, Ms. Sneddon, who is on here to be approved, kindergarten teacher tonight is an alumna of South London. So I always love to see when South London people come back here and work and teach. Uh, we have a lot of great ones. Um, so let's vote.
Starting with Martha Dennis?
Yes.
Gina Bichetti?
Yes.
Brian Keys?
Yes.
Kevin Kovalaski?
Yes.
Aaron O'Leary?
Yes.
Michael Strauss?
Yes.
Jennifer Bachelor?
Yes.
Ronnie Todd Moreno?
Yeah.
Tim Gallant?
Yes.
Curriculum and Technology. Mr. Michael?
Uh, so this evening, or the curriculum committee met on twelve eleven. Um, for technology, um, it's informed us that the elementary AV is all complete now. Um, so that all the projectors have now been installed. Uh, and he is moving on to the five A building and doing regular walkthroughs to make sure that our wiring is all located in the right place. Um, AV and security estimates are also coming in for that building. Um, and he'll be working on setting up the network phones and clocks. Uh, one thing I do want to note is that he's conscious of. The fact that we do have some existing items in both West Ham and the high school and we'll be using them as much as possible. So that we don't have to source new materials. Um, and then also he discussed our theater microphones as we come into our. Um, performances, they are looking at the costs between renting and buying those so that we have them on, on hand. Um. Glenn reported to us that the gifted and telling to parent focus group has started to meet and we have seventeen parents. Who've stepped forward to that. So thank you to everyone who could, who has done that. Um, we did go through the accelerate overview, which you saw this evening. Uh, she also informed us that when your benchmarks are coming up and that we would. Be seeing that at our January meeting, uh, that the school choice lottery final stages were coming on and. Uh, that we had mostly high school level applicants this year and we had no applicants in our largest of classes that would have been problematic. Uh. She also spoke about our ESL parent night, uh, said it was very successful, said our staff did a great job that evening. And um, that there was a lot of connection into the community. We also are going to start looking at our science and J S L A prep. Um, as everybody knows, that is something that is on the radar and we will be reviewing testing and updating benchmarks for that. We also will be beginning an algebra one pilot. Um, again, math is something that is on the radar for us. And we have two teachers in place to teach that. Um, our tutoring program will be rolling out. For um, fifth and sixth graders, uh, who are on the cusp in N G S L A and that will be starting in late January. Um, and we ended with something that I was really happy to see. Um, which was an example of a sixth grade class giving a Socratic seminar. Uh, it was really fantastic to be able to watch those kids actually in action. Seeing the curriculum that we all voted on, being put in place and watching them discuss a text with confidence. Uh, without a teacher involved. It was really an amazing thing to, to see. Before, I don't have anything to put forward, but just to report.
Michael, what was that on number one time?
Uh, we are going to be piloting two classrooms for algebra one with the new curriculum to, to see where.
And Michael, could you talk a little bit about what the um, fan group for the GNT, the stuff we're doing?
Uh, I just wanted to. Yes, absolutely. Um, I just wanted to update. We have yet to meet, we'll meet in January for the focus group. I sent out. Um, the form um, in the fall and then I just sent it out again. So. Based on the PCG, which was the consulting group we had last year, um, that came and did. A program review of our enrichment program. Um, one of their recommendations was to form a parent focus group. And so we will meet um, in January and we'll come together and then we will look at what are some of the suggestions and goals. That PCG recommended to us, um, our criteria and assessment. Um, identification process will something that we'll look at. Um, but it will be a chance for families to share their experiences. We'll review a lot of, as I said, the presentation that PCG meant, and then we'll make some plans moving forward. So it's a way for the families as major stakeholders in this, um, to support their children. And how we can look to see, um, what our GT can develop into K twelve.
Any other questions for curriculum? All right, uh, policy committee. Uh, I know there's nothing to move, but do you have anything more?
So policy did not meet in December, so there is nothing to bring forward on a first read. Uh, for second read, there's additional questions on the policy and regulation on attendance. Uh, which we'll be addressing over the next month and then we'll bring back in January. So nothing to move.
Good, thank you. Okay, very good. Um, routine information items, we do have one, uh, one item to vote on. This is the. Uh, harassment, intimidation and bullying reports. We discussed this in an executive session after the meeting last month. So tonight we'll be voting on the outcome of that. Um, so with that, I will ask for a motion to accept the harassment, intimidation and bullying report. Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second, obviously, we can't discuss any of the details of the public. It does involve a student and it's a, so that is a confidential issue. Um, but uh, we will have a role call for this, which is a voice vote for this. Um. So. Let's do it all. Let's do a, do a whole problem.
Sure, okay. Um, we'll start with Mrs. Bichetti. Mr. Keys?
Yes.
Aaron O'Leary?
No.
Mike Strauss?
No.
Uh, Jennifer Bachelor?
Yes.
Martha Dennis?
Yes.
Ronnie Todd Moreno?
Yeah.
Tim Gallant?
Yes.
All right. Parents, too. Uh, we did also as a district, we did have uh, fire drills, safety drills at various required times. It's here in the agenda. Um, I didn't see the enrollment.
Yeah, it's just for public knowledge.
Oh, it's posted, okay. So, uh, uh, our enrollment has been posted, so it's available online for anyone interested to see that report. Uh, with that, we come to the second period of public comments. Um, the same, uh, same rules apply. Uh, anybody who has anything that you'd like to address the board on, you're welcome to come up, just give us your name and your municipality. And try to, you know, make your statement to the board and, and limit it to three minutes if you can. So with that, uh, second period of public comment is open. Does anyone have something they'd like to bring to the board?
Um, Jessica Hartigan, West Ham. Well, I just, I have like a comment slash question. Has there been any consideration for? Coming up with like a tentative plan for the pre K and not just making like a snap decision. I, I say this in, not saying that you're making a snap decision, but. With the grant money, is there a possibility of moving them here or building onto the middle school? I just. I encourage all of you to go see the car line at the middle school location, watching the fifth and sixth graders put these kids. In their cars, hand their backpacks off. I mean, they hold on to these kids for dear life. And it's teaching them a great deal of responsibility and Dave said that it happened organically. The kids just picked up on it and did it on their own. I mean, seeing a lot of these kids struggle through COVID and have like a lot of social issues, watching them do these tasks and. And interact with the kids so organically is wonderful. And there's a lot of learning experiences and there's a lot of. Things that we could build into the curriculum to help the kids in the district. And I wonder if they're better off with the older kids versus just more younger kids down at Lambertville. You know what I mean? I, I think they're more appreciated by the older kids and. You know, the Hudson comes home every day talking about the preschoolers. Like, it's like the highlight of his day. So I think that. That should be more of a consideration, like kind of allowing that relationship to flourish and putting them with the older kids. But that's just my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a comment? I have any online comment or more than? With that, I'm going to close the second period of public comment. Um, we do not have a need for an executive session this evening. So with that, I'm going to seek a motion to adjourn. Michael with a motion and a second, please. Second by Kevin, any, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Folks, I do want to say before we go to all of you, Merry Christmas, our administrators, teachers. We are grateful for every one of you and um, you members of the board. This is an unusual year in that everybody that's on the board here in December will also be on the board in January. So I'm looking forward to working with these to be win the new year. Have a wonderful holiday.
Hi, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Hi.
Bye, Martha.
Good night, Martha.
Bye.
Happy holidays.